Good evening, everyone. We'll start this again. This is a public hearing, so there's a fair amount of preamble. It sounds very officious. There are some instructions, but bear with me. I will try and go through it as smoothly as possible. It's about six, seven minutes long. Good evening. My name is Kate Louise Stamford, SCRD Electoral Area F Director for the Sunshine Coast Regional District Board. I am chairing this public hearing today. I would like to introduce SCRD Director Dustin Gabius from Area B, who is attending as alternate chair today. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to hear your comments firsthand. SCRD Senior Planner Julie Clark will introduce and state the intended purpose of the bylaws and may provide clarifications on aspects concerning these bylaws. All written submissions received by 12 noon on July 16, 2024 today will be entered into the formal record of the public hearing and be available for public inspection. SCRD Recording Secretary Genevieve Dixon will be recording your comments this evening. Further, this hearing is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. I'd like to acknowledge we are meeting in the Territory, the Sichul and Squomish Nations this evening. Directors present at the public hearing today: Leonard Lee from Area A, Kelly Backs from Area D, and on Zoom is Donna McMahon from Area E. Our regional district staff present tonight are Sherri Reed, our corporate officer, Kristi Weeb, Deputy Corporate Officer, Tina Perot, Acting CAO, Christine Armitage, Executive Coordinator, Ian Hall, General Manager of Planning, Julie Clark, our Senior Planners, Jonathan Jackson, Assistant Manager of Planning, Chris Humphries, Planner 2. And I think I've got everybody, yes. This hearing is convened pursuant of Section 465 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to the board respecting matters contained in the proposed Sunshine Coast Regional District Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 722.9 and 337.123. A public hearing is one of many steps required by BC law for local governments to review applications for land use changes. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an opportunity to be heard for each person who feels their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw. By BC law, this part of the process is scripted and involves a one-way communication from residents to the hearing. Public hearings do not include dialogue or debate and are not a question-answer session. Public hearings are a venue to systematically hear each resident speak. The public hearing was advertised on the July 5th and July 12th, 2024 editions of the Coast Reporter newspaper. A copy of the ads are available for inspection at the public hearing information binder. Further, a news release was published on June 26, 2024. At this public hearing, any person present who believes their interests are affected by the proposed bylaws will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to matters contained within the bylaws only. Participants are expected to express their opinions in a respectful and courteous way to other participants and to the community at large. Please be mindful that this is a public meeting, and all verbal and written submissions will form part of the public record. Each speaker will be given an initial three minutes maximum to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. If more time is needed, another turn to speak will be offered after everyone has had their first opportunity. Be patient. There may be several speakers, but you will get an opportunity to speak. I recognize there may be a desire by residents to connect to other concerns, such as provincial initiatives, including the Dock Management Plan and/or the Land Act amendments, but this is not the appropriate venue to make those statements, and we don't want to take up the valuable time for hearing about the proposed bylaw amendment. If speakers do go off-topic, then I will raise my hand as a reminder to come back to the bylaws. The identity of persons who make written or verbal submissions forms part of the public record. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your first and last name and the rural area that you come from. So how do you get on the speakers list? If you are in the boardroom, please add your name to the speaker's sign-up sheet located at the back of the room. When the chair calls your name, that's me, you can then address the meeting if you come up forward to the chairs at the front here. For those joining us on Zoom through a computer or device using the Zoom app, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to speak. A member of staff will lower your hand to indicate that you have been added to the speakers list. Please remember to name yourself as an identifiable participant. If you have joined the public hearing via telephone only, press star nine to raise your hand and you will be added to the list. Staff can only identify you by your telephone number, so when it's your turn to speak, the chair will advise the participant calling from a particular phone number that is up next. Please listen for your phone number. When the chair calls on you to speak by name or telephone, you will be allowed to address the meeting. You will need to unmute your microphone when prompted. Once everyone has an opportunity to address the hearing, a second comment round will be open for those who wish to address the hearing again. Round two will follow the same procedure. After this public hearing has concluded, staff will provide a summary report and recommended actions to the SCRD board members at a following open public meeting for consideration. The board may, without further notice or hearing, adopt or defeat the bylaws or ask staff for further alterations and possibly additional public processes before further consideration of the bylaw adoption in accordance with provisions of the Local Government Act. May I remind you that tonight is your final opportunity for input on the bylaws, and no further information can be received by the SCRD board members for consideration once the public hearing has concluded. Elected officials are not permitted to receive any phone calls or written submissions by email, mail, or fax after the advertised deadline of 12 noon today. Any additional information or questions must be directed to staff at planning@scrd.ca. I will now ask SCRD Senior Planner Julie Clark to introduce and state the purpose of this proposed bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to do a little bit of a dual act tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. I'm Jonathan Jackson, the manager of Planning and Development at SCRD, and I am joined tonight by my colleague Julie Clark, Senior Planner, to introduce the Amendment Bylaws 722.9 and 337.123, which are the subject of tonight's public hearing. Tonight, we are here to discuss amendments to SCRD Zoning Bylaw 337, which applies to Electoral Area A, and Zoning Bylaw 722, which applies to Electoral Areas B, D, E, and F. Zoning bylaws are a tool used to regulate matters pertaining to land use. In the context of the proposed amendments under discussion tonight, zoning bylaws are a regulatory tool that can shift development away from environmentally sensitive or hazardous areas and ensure new construction and redevelopment is cited appropriately. The proposed Amendment Bylaw 722.9 and 337.123 involve four key components are intended to achieve a combination of alignment within the intent of provincial legislation and consistency with provincial guidelines relating to industry standards. There are four specific amendments which are described as follows, and you may wish to share a comment on one or more tonight. The first is a proposed amendment to bylaw calculation of parcel area for subdivision. An action is required related to this proposed amendment to align SCRD Bylaw 722 and 337 with the intent of provincial legislation. The proposed amendment applies to all electoral areas. Number two is a proposed amendment to achieve a minimum 17-meter setback from wetlands and creeks. Action is required related to this proposed amendment to align with SCRD Bylaw 337 with the intent of provincial legislation. This proposed amendment applies to Area A only and is consistent with regulations existing in all other electoral areas under Zoning Bylaw 722. Number three is a proposed amendment to provide a five-meter buffer to streamside protection and enhancement areas. This proposed amendment is an optional consideration to address challenges and infractions and development encroachment. The proposed amendment applies to all electoral areas. Number four is a proposed amendment to provide a 15-meter setback from the ocean. This proposed amendment is an optional consideration to provide alignment with provincial guidelines intended to inform local governments of industry standards that mitigate risk associated with climate adaptation. The proposed amendment applies to Area A only and is consistent with regulations existing in all other electoral areas under Zoning Bylaw 722. My colleague Julie Clark will now describe each of these amendments in further detail with a PowerPoint presentation.
Just one minute to get set up here. There we go. Good evening. My name is Julie Clark. Thank you very much for being here. My job this evening is to give you a brief overview of the proposed amendments. Some of you have been along for this process from the beginning. So the first reading of these bylaws were presented in June 2023, as you can see up there on the screen. And here's a brief timeline. We've conducted a series of referrals, including a workshop for our advisory planning commissions. Those took place between June 2023 and March of this year. The second reading of these bylaws came forward in April 2024 of this year. And from May until just last week, we conducted some information campaigns and some engagement around the specifics of the bylaw amendments. So my hope is that in attending tonight, you've already seen a social media campaign around what is a riparian area and that you've been able to watch a video that our team produced to help explain the amendments tonight. If you have seen those things, you will see a little bit of duplication tonight, and that's to ensure that we all have the same understanding going forward. So here we are tonight at the public hearing, and what happens after this is the team in the room takes all the information, all the feedback, all the comments coming from you and others here in the room and online up until noon today, compiles all those and produces a report to bring forward to our decision-makers for consideration of third reading of the bylaws and possible adoption. The timing for that is not yet decided, and so emphasis on where we are here tonight. My apologies that the split screen divides this up a little bit, but the intention with this slide is to summarize for you the amendments that are proposed. So there's a number of different ways to look at these or categorize them in the way that you think about them. Three of the four amendments relate to freshwater only. I'm going to run you through each of those tonight. One of the changes that are proposed relates only to oceanfront or marine shoreline. Two of the proposed amendments relate to all of our rural electoral areas, and two of the proposed amendments relate to Area A only. You can see them categorized on the screen there. I am going to talk about the freshwater amendments, the proposed amendments that relate to freshwater first. There are three of them, but before I do that, I wanted to share a little bit about riparian areas in BC and specifically about BC's riparian areas protection regulation. So that is a regulation that applies within the geographical area of SCRD, which is the reason why some of these amendments are proposed tonight. Our bylaws are currently out of date with what the provincial regulation requires. What you can't see on the cross-screen, and my apologies, is that the intent of this regulation is to protect fish habitat. And what that means is at the time of proposed development, if that development is near a water course and if that water course is covered under the riparian areas protection regulation, what is required is that a streamside protection and enhancement area be established. So that gets shortened to the word SPIA. That's what a SPIA means, Streamside Enhancement and Protection Area. And the purpose of establishing it is to protect it from development. Now, that protection area does not get established by our team. It gets established by a person with a title called a qualified environmental professional who a property owner or a developer hires as a third party to analyze the conditions on the ground and near the water and identify the SPIA. So that's the output of their analysis, and that comes to us with a development proposal. So now I'm going to walk you through the three proposed regulations that relate to freshwater only. So the first is relating to calculating lot area when subdividing land. So this is an update that is proposed in order to meet provincial riparian areas protection regulation intent. The amendments, as proposed, would ensure that new lots that are created through subdivision meet the minimum lot size without the water course or the SPIA included. And the intent of the proposed amendment, or the intent of the regulation overall, is to protect the SPIA from development encroaching upon it. This would ensure that as the SCRD, we don't create future lots that are undevelopable. Let me back up. One thing I forgot to mention there is that this proposed amendment applies to all of the electoral areas. Okay. Freshwater setbacks for bylaw 337 is related to Area A only, and this is again to update SCRD bylaw in order to meet the current provincial riparian areas protection regulation intent. So right now, in Area A, the setback for wetlands and ponds is currently 7.5 meters, and the proposal is increasing it to 17. And that proposal is to establish consistency with, first, the riparian areas protection regulation and, second, consistency with the other four electoral areas who have already adopted an amendment here, and that amendment is to 17 meters. There are no proposed changes to setbacks from lakes. So what you see here is setback for streams and setbacks for wetlands and ponds. Again, that amendment is for Area A only. The final proposed amendment is the buffer. The final proposed amendment that relates to freshwater is a buffer for the streamside protection and enhancement area. The streamside protection and enhancement area are considered protected areas. So this buffer is proposed in order to protect the SPIA. And where this thinking came from is if you can imagine the sighting of a building, a new building or a renovation, an extension to a building that is right up against a SPIA, it's very, very difficult to excavate or to create that improvement without impacting the SPIA at all. And so the proposal for this buffer is to establish a transition zone between the SPIA and construction and to allow space in between, essentially. Allow for buildings and structures to be sighted further away from the SPIA. So that's protection for the long term. It's also protection during the construction phase where excavation needs to happen. There is a proposal included in there that you may have seen to include hardscaping as well, again with the intention of protecting the SPIA for the long term. So overall, this proposed amendment is to address a pattern of bylaw infractions and encroachment on the SPIA that we have observed over the last recent bit of time. We believe that in creating a buffer, that we prevent the habitat that we prevent the habitat impacts and also prevent bylaw infractions by communicating clear expectations for property owners and for developers. We know that those impacts create costly delays, both for developers, for property owners, for our team, and for the province. And so we are considering this an improvement to expectations and also relating to customer service. This buff, the proposed buffer, pardon me, is not required for legislative alignment. It is something that the province has told us is necessary to protect SPIAs, but it is not currently within legislation. It's only relevant for freshwater areas. That's very important to note. We have seen some confusion in the comments that we've received so far. This does not apply to marine shorelines. And again, this proposed amendment is for all areas. I'm gonna move away from the freshwater proposed amendments. And the final amendment that I'll talk about this evening is related to ocean setbacks. It is in Area A only. The reason in Area A only is because this amendment has been adopted in other areas already. The current setback from the ocean in Area A is 7.5 meters. And the proposal is to increase it to 15. This proposal is not required for legislative update. It is recommended in order to align with other provincial guidelines for flood mitigation, et cetera. You can see the guidelines there on the screen. And the emphasis with this proposal is on no change to uses. So the current uses that are permitted within the setback area at 7.5 would continue to be permitted within the 15-meter setback as well. So there is no change to the uses, only to the distance. There's that summary slide for you again with an emphasis on the amendments that relate to freshwater, the amendments that relate to ocean amendment, that relates to ocean, only one. And again, there are two proposed amendments that relate to all areas, two proposed amendments that relate to Area A only. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. So I think we'd like to start the hearing. This is the first call for submissions in the order of the speakers list. So I'm looking for a speaker. So Ellen.
Ellen Lorimer is on the line. And I'm representing the North Lake Neighbors Association.
Turn to green.
Thank you. What I'll be talking about today is a letter that was written by the president of the North Lake Residents Association. "We would like to voice our opposition to the proposed bylaw amendments and request that you vote no to these changes. The past few years have been challenging for the residents of North Lake. Recently, we spent two years dealing with what we consider to be excessive logging around our lake. Then we had been informed that our docks were no longer valid. Now the SCRD wants to add additional levels of complexity to what is already an unclear regulatory framework. Continual changes to regulation coming at property owners from various ministries and various levels of government need to be considered cumulatively, and the rights of citizens, communities, property owners, and business owners need to be taken into consideration. In addition, we as a community need to be informed well in advance of proposed changes and have ample opportunities to study what's proposed and respond to these proposals. The SCRD should wait until the outcomes of the dock management planning processes completed. Any resulting changes should be made as part of a holistic approach to docks, foreshore, and riparian areas' usage and development across the Sunshine Coast, recognizing the different needs in different zones and respecting property owners' perspectives. The complexity of regulation and level of bureaucracy makes it extremely onerous to be informed and understand what is in fact the right thing for our communities. As residents paying property taxes for very few services, we find it totally irresponsible that the SCRD would consider that bylaw changes that restrict common law rights of waterfront property owners to access their properties are housekeeping matters. These changes impact our property ownership rights, homes, futures, and should not be treated flippantly. Just as the B.C. government and Seashell First Nations have chosen to listen to the community and take the appropriate time to consider impacts and community concerns and practicalities, so these decisions, or so should the SCRD take the time to understand the impacts of these decisions and work closely with associations such as ours so that proposed changes can work well for both protecting the environment and respecting the fact that many of us have lived on North Lake for decades and deeply care about the health and future of our lake. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Cambon with Roberts Creek. Should I go or wait?
I'm just gonna hold you a minute. There's something I should have mentioned. I'd appreciate if there was no clapping or no response to speakers. It helps, it does slows things down a little bit. And it makes people less comfortable if they have to speak in an opposing view. So all views are welcome here. Thank you.
Okay. Ready? Yeah, Jim Cambon with Roberts Creek and representing the homeowners along Whittaker Beach or Bonnybrook Beach. And I just wanna say as a start, you know, we care deeply about the environment. I mean, everybody does. I mean, we feel like we're stewards of the environment. We're the ones down on the beach cleaning up the mess after weekends and things and picking up styrofoam that gets washed in and protecting fish species. We have a number of creeks coming in. None of them are fish-bearing, but we've had to hire consultants to prove that. But the waterways don't actually go into the ocean, so it's pretty easy to prove. And I think it's fair to say that we would like to see option three, granted where it would be do nothing at this time because we don't feel the science is there to justify amendments. Is the current system broken? Is it causing problems for the district? I mean, if it is, you know, let's see the data. You know, you're having enforcement problems and maybe there's greater issues. We haven't seen the science, although I understand the science exists. If it does, it should be somewhere we can see it publicly. I know there was one folder that was here during the information session, but it was just one folder and there was no URL or anything. So we do feel like we're at a disadvantage. And we've got biologists and all kinds of scientists in our homeowners group who are pretty smart people and lawyers and things. So we do, you know, I know you're 13 months into the process, but we feel like we're one month into the process. And you're going into your third and final reading. And, you know, it seems like a mad dash to the finish line. And we'd really like a chance to get our say and see the science. You know, our concern too is that, you know, the depreciation of property values is gonna be massive here. And I don't know if you guys have contemplated that. But, you know, assessed values are gonna drop by, you know, up to 50% for a lot of these properties potentially, which is gonna be a big problem for tax revenue for the SCRD. It's gonna be a big problem for homeowners, their retirement plans and everything else. And, you know, we want these properties to be there for our children and grandchildren. So we do think that's gonna be a problem. And because you've got so many legally non-compliant homes, I mean, if you guys, you must know the number because you've done all the data. I mean, is there hundreds, or if not thousands, of legally non-compliant properties that are gonna be suddenly in the system that you're gonna have to deal with? I mean, that's gonna be an administrative nightmare. I know you're doing this to streamline it, but I think what you're doing is creating a huge problem because you're gonna have all these people applying for new assessments. You're gonna have to do tax adjustments. And you're gonna have to deal with all these non-compliant properties that all have to, you know, apply for variances any time they wanna do anything. And I am concerned, you know, that this notion that you wanna create a greenway. You're not saying that, but this is what I'm hearing. And in the minutes, it talks about facilitating public enjoyment of the coastline and reconciliation. And which, you know, I think the thought process that I hear from people is that, well, once these houses burn down, they can't rebuild them. We're gonna have a greenway along the breach. This is great. And as a volunteer firefighter, this scares the hell out of me, to be honest. I really worry that people can take this, misinterpret it, and say, this is a way to free up land along the shoreline and create this great greenway. You know, because there's people out there that think that way. So, you know, that's, it's a concern for me. I think that, you know, there's some provincial rules that I think Ron Fife will talk about that may be contradictory to what you're trying to do as well. So I think there's a lot to think about. I hope you guys don't rush into it. And I hope you guys think about the homeowners who were here for a long time and wanna be here for a long time. And our house is 75 years old. And I hope it's there forever and I don't have to rebuild it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up is Larry Van Hatten. Oh, Gerald. No, no, you're up, you're up, Gerald. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, part of what I'm going to present is a letter that came to me at 4 o'clock. And none of the letters that come in late are given to the board, is that correct? So yeah, I asked if I could give the gist of what he's saying. So I'll do that and make a couple of comments then. First of all, my own comments, I'll be brief about my own. I wrote a very long letter to you on behalf of our family. And my main concern is my rights as a private property waterfront property owner and access and egress to our boats and our dock in event of fire or even recreational use of the lake and the water is impeded if the SPIA is some kind of a sacred zone that can't be passed through with no hard surfacing and difficulty in even being allowed to repair stairs or railings and so on. So the other comment, I'll just add to it, and the rest you can read in my lawn letter, is adding that five-meter buffer, I think, is a terrible mistake, unnecessary, an overreach, and possibly well-intentioned, but could be easily, aims of that could easily be accomplished administratively by having people post bonds and restore any damage and being told they'll have to pay for any damage and restore the area. But adding five meters from people's property, you're really stealing their rights to use that property. It's soft core expropriation. That's a big deal. Private property and defending the rights of private property is a sacred obligation in a democracy. You don't just run roughshod through it. Now, my neighbor's comments, he's asking you to also vote no on these bylaw amendments. And the changes that are being voted on, he says, are not well reasoned. Most of the people that own waterfront properties have sacrificed a great deal to purchase and improve the property for their families to enjoy. By the way, my neighbor, his name is Dan Fritz, and the family's been there for decades and decades. So the changes seem ill-considered and punitive and unfairly affect property, properties and business owners. In fact, it is even appropriate to say the intent of them could be considered to be mean-spirited. For example, if someone's home was unfortunately burned down, if 25% of it is not intact, you must now go and build according to the new bylaws, and it may not be possible. My neighbor asks, can you even insure a place that cannot be rebuilt on its site? These are questions, have you thought about it, besides thinking about impacts, potential impacts on property values? And finally, the concept of repairing the so-called hard surfaces of docks, stairways, ways of accessing over rocks and cliffs down to your waterfront, you have to go through a whole bunch of hassle because this is now some sacred area that's not to be walked through. It's your front area of your own property. We all are very careful with it. But surely we have a right to use our own front property without... One of the government documents that I saw is suggesting that you folks pass bylaws to put fences around it.
Just, you are over your three minutes and you can come back and speak again.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think I got the gist of what he said.
Larry Van Hatten.
Hello, my name is Larry Van Hatten. And I'm here representing the Sua Lake Stewardship Alliance. We're an organization, we represent over 500 families on North Lake, Sakinaw Lake, and Ruby Lake. And we're, the members of our association are the Ruby Lake Landholders Association, the North Lake Neighbors Association, and the Sakinaw Lake Community Association. I had asked for two times, I will come back later and speak directly about the Sakinaw Lake, if you don't mind. All of our members have property which contains or is, joins riparian areas. And as our name indicates, we support environmental stewardship and protection of critical habitat. However, we are completely opposed to these proposed changes for the following reasons. The amendments will have a serious effect on lakefront properties and go well beyond what has been legislated by the provincial government. The buffer and hardscape provisions are severe overreach. I think Gerald has covered a lot of these comments already, but they do threaten the safe access not only to the waterfront, but to our dwellings. Many of our dwellings were built, are built within the 30-meter maximum assessment area. You're also expanding the sea depth by approximately 30%, and that reduces the use and enjoyment of private property significantly. And this also creates more enforcement issues for the SCRD and the province, where a lot of your enforcement is perceived as, I would say it's sporadic and unfair, we think of. And we think this is gonna generate more variance requests as hundreds of properties will be relegated to legal non-conforming status and hence at the mercy of statute recommendations. So this can involve costly variance applications and would definitely affect any rebuilds, alterations, and recreating safe access to the water, such as bringing material to sites, especially for the boat access properties. We also think that it is impeding property owners' rights to remove fire fuel from this area, which is a big concern of ours. The subdivision changes are difficult to understand and hard to justify. The exclusion of areas of standing water seem particularly harsh as the reference to repairing that provisions have been removed. This could potentially exclude vast areas of land. These changes are a huge concern to our lakefront members and are not mere housekeeping items. To say they are housekeeping items is completely misleading to the public and downplays the need to look more closely at the proposed changes. The bylaw amendments are not consistent with our current Area A OCP, which was the product of over two years of meetings and public consultation. There has been no assessment of the effect of these changes on the number of properties in Area A which would be negatively impacted, the strain on SCRD resources as a result of hundreds of property being rendered legally non-conforming, the economic impact of decrease in use and enjoyment of waterfront land, given the boost seasonal homes provide to the local economy.
Mr. Van Hatten, are you ready to wrap up? Your three minutes is over.
I can, I can finish when I come back to my second.
Certainly, yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I can't sit, so I'll have to stand. I hope you can hear me okay.
Thank you. Shirley, can I get your name and...
Okay, okay. I'm, my, I'm here wearing two hats. I'm resident of Roberts Creek, and I have a property that Malcolm Creek goes right through it, and I'm also here as president of the Sunshine Coast Streamkeeper Society. So I'd like to start out first by, I've thought a little bit about what I'm going to say and after hearing different comments tonight. So what I would like us all to do is instead of looking at the macro of this issue and like a drone looking down, I'd really like all of us to look up from a tiny little bug that's in a creek. The creeks are so important for our whole environmental health here on the Sunshine Coast. The reason that I brought this map up is because it's an SCRD map, and it shows just how many creeks there are here on the Sunshine Coast. Welcome to look at it after. And when I saw this map, I realized that these creeks need protection. When I moved onto my property seven years ago, I found out that it's a salmon-bearing creek. At that time, I found out also that no one was monitoring them, no one was counting the salmon or doing water quality. So we started Streamkeepers. At that time, I probably never even really heard about the word riparian. So now, so that started a whole journey of what's so important for our salmon, for our wildlife, and for all of us who enjoy the Sunshine Coast. Because I think most of us have moved here because of the beauty. And when I moved here, it was from a property that developers had moved in and they took down every tree but one. So when I came here, I just saw this beautiful place and knew that it has to, there has to be ways to protect it. And I know that it sounds like some of these amendments sound like they're erroneous or hard on us, but I think all of us need to look and say, think to ourselves, why are we here? If we don't stand up and protect these creatures, who will? I really respect this planning staff in that they're the ones that are on the front line when people, you know, break the, you know, the recommendations, they try and repair the riparian. I want to say one thing, I got 26 seconds, is the creeks cannot afford to lose one tree. We're already at 18 degrees for these salmon in the summer. We have temperature loggers in the creeks. They need the shade. We, in the time of climate change, we must, must, we must protect these riparian areas. And I really urge you to vote yes.
Anthony Boor.
Yeah, I'd like to start by correcting my name. It's not Boor. That doesn't bode very well for my presentation. It's Paree, P-A-R-E.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So, so, yeah, I'm, obviously, my elementary school handwriting is not working. Anyway, I would like to follow the previous speaker by also encouraging the...
Can I, can I just get your rural area that you're from?
Oh, sorry, Area E. Yes, Area E. So I would like also to follow the previous speaker to encourage the board to vote in favor of this amendment. I think that a number of factors, way larger than any of us individually, are affecting us. The outdated nature of the OCPs, they do not cover the kinds of realities we face now. They're in the process of being revised, but they're many, many years old. They do not face, they do not attend to the realities that we're facing. Climate change, the increasing effects of climate change on us, there are, the increasing knowledge we have gained from environmental science, all of those things speak to these amendments. All of those things speak to the need for us to be better stewards of the land. I do not think it is the sacred duty of government to protect individual property owners. I feel terrible, you know, sympathy for the people who this will affect. It is the sacred duty of government to protect the collective, to protect all of us, and increasingly, to protect the land that we live on, which is deteriorating all around us. So I would like to speak very strongly in favor of this, and I would also like to congratulate the board on the courage to do this. These are not popular things. You probably have heard that. These are not popular moves, but you are making the kinds of moves we absolutely need to sustain our environment, to improve our environment. So, totally in favor, thank you for the courage to make this move.
Dawn Allen.
I'm also from Area E, and I just wanted to say also thank you to staff and the board for moving forward in the ways that you did. It sounded very carefully thought out and procedurally thoughtful. I am very concerned about the need to think holistically in a context of climate change, and I feel like climate change and the kinds of events that we face regularly, particularly in summer, I guess, we're experiencing extreme heat and those kinds of things. I think it's a big reminder that we don't live on parcels of land. We live on planet Earth. We share the Sunshine Coast. We share our ecosystems. We share a healthy biodiversity. It's all shared. And I want to echo the comments, I guess, of the previous two speakers, which is that it's hard to do what we're trying to do here in this room, but it's really important, and it takes a lot of courage. And I, I guess I feel like it's time to set aside individual needs and focus more on collective, larger, holistic needs for a broader area than just private properties. I fully support the amendments, and thank you for doing this work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harry McKinnon. See you in the room.
Actually, I'm Catherine McEckern, and I'm speaking on behalf of Harvey McKinnon. Harvey is from Area A, North Lake, and I'd like to read his statement. Dear SCRD Council, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed bylaw amendments and urge you to vote no. Property owners are already facing a barrage of regulatory changes from different ministries and various levels of government. These changes must be evaluated in totality. I feel you are neglecting the rights and interests of citizens, communities, property owners, and business owners before... Oh, I feel you are neglecting the rights and interests of those parties before enacting these bylaws. And these changes are punitive. I urge the SCRD to wait until the dock management planning process is completed. Then any changes should be incorporated into a comprehensive strategy for managing docks, foreshore, and riparian areas throughout the Sunshine Coast. They must acknowledge the diverse needs of different regions and interests. The current regulatory environment is both complex and bureaucratic. It is challenging and time-consuming for individuals like me to stay informed and understand what genuinely benefits our communities. I feel there has not been enough information given to the individuals and families who will have their properties impacted negatively. I cannot believe any property owner would welcome these extreme changes. There will be a significant backlash. As a property taxpaying constituent, I find it unacceptable that the SCRD considers bylaw changes that limit waterfront property owners' common law rights to access their properties as merely a housekeeping matter. These changes affect people's property rights, plans, futures, and should be treated with the seriousness they deserve. The net effect will be devastating economically for the coast. Allowing properties to fall apart essentially means fewer people will spend time on the coast. This will certainly lead to job losses, imposing an economic hardship on everyone, not just property owners. Both the B.C. government and the Seashell First Nations have decided to listen to the community's response. I am optimistic that they will take the necessary time to consider the consequences and community concerns regarding the DMP. I strongly encourage the SCRD to examine the implications of these bylaw decisions. I am a lifelong environmental activist. I've served on the National Board of one of Canada's largest environmental groups and have been a founding member of two other environmental organizations. I'm all in favor of protecting riparian areas. I also favor protecting coastal forests and the animals that live in them. However, I notice governments are still approving massive clearcutting that's devastating to so many creatures, their homes, and our climate. The massive clearcutting has a much more significant impact on the, negative impact on the environment. Everyone I know takes care of the environment near their lakefront cottages. We are thoughtful and responsible. I believe that unintended consequences come from every major decision, and I believe implementing these bylaw decisions will have severe unintended consequences that would be devastating to property owners like ourselves and also hurt the much larger community as well. Sincerely, Harvey McKinnon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leanne Johnson.
Hi, I'm Leanne Johnson. I live in Gibson's, but today I'm representing the Sunshine Coast Conservation Association. And our association has longstanding and deep concerns around riparian areas throughout the coast as well as in Cathay Regional District. We have strongly supported the proposed bylaw changes. I would note that all of the local areas are undergoing an OCP review this year, and opportunities to address zoning issues would be in those OCP reviews. This plan is impacting development, new development, for the next 50 years. We know today that any new development will be facing uncertain climate conditions. We can see from what's happened in Toronto today that startling, very shocking, weather patterns that will be increasing, and we can expect more extremes even in our fortunately blessed areas. The developments that will be done need to be able to be safe and secure in such a situation. I think the proposals are very strong and helpful for the future and for our grandchildren. And I hope that you will indeed act in the public interest, noting that all of us as private property owners have a number of restrictions placed upon us as part of being a member of a community where we can live together amicably. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Suzanne Seng.
Hi, folks. Oh, okay. So I'm the executive director of the Sunshine Coast Conservation Association, and I'm going to speak with that hat on first and come back and speak for myself afterwards. So the SCCA, as Leanne noted, has 30 years on the Sunshine Coast, working with local government, communities, groups, property owners, stakeholders, all levels of government, First Nations, to preserve, protect, restore, and help sustainably manage ecological values. And that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about ecological values that all of us, as citizens of the community, rely on for everything, right? From, like Shirley said, the bugs that the fish eat, that we eat, to the trees that shade them, that keep the streams dry, to the trees and the roots that moderate the rainfall that comes rocketing down those creeks when we chop the trees down in the riparian areas. Whittaker Creek, I mean, we all know what that looks like. The erosion is crazy. It took the road out during the atmospheric river events. How many culverts were blown out? How much do we have to see in front of our eyes before we start doing what needs to be done to address the problem? So the SCRD can't stop logging, but it can protect riparian areas. I have to say too that I feel like there's a lot of misunderstanding in some of the comments that we've been hearing, a lot of rhetoric, words like sacred zone, overreach, complex bureaucracy. I just want to go back to the beginning when the planners told us that these, you know, we're making relatively small amendments, and maybe private property owners who don't think that's accurate, but these are relatively small amendments to come into alignment with best practices and provincial regulations. The penny dropped for me when Julie was talking about the fact that we don't want to create undevelopable lots. You're not allowed to create undevelopable lots. If there's an existing use and a catastrophic loss occurs, if somebody's home is in the riparian area, they have to be able to rebuild. The fear mongering that comes from the email threads and the different groups, it's fear mongering. It's not accurate, right? So I think zooming out, taking into context the big picture, that the regional district has an obligation to everybody on the Sunshine Coast, to the taxpayers, whether they live here or don't, to properly sustainably manage our natural assets. It's the cheapest way to go. It's a lot cheaper to preserve the riparian areas than it is to, you know, pay your insurance fees as they go up and up and up because you can't rebuild your house in the flood zone, or to repair the roads or the water treatment facilities because they get washed out in a flood. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on Zoom.
Hello, can you speak?
Yes, I can, thank you. And could you give your name and the rural area that you're speaking from?
Hi, everybody. My name is Allison Taylor, and I live in Area B. I'm in favor of all the amendments. Our local wildlife and plant life has been suffering badly from climate change and all kinds of human activities. Since borders of land along waterways are often ecologically rich, I'm in favor of additional protections for the species that live in those places. I think most of us would say that we're in favor of protecting the environment, but people have different ideas of what constitutes protection. And I can imagine that some property owners might choose to prioritize increasing the value of their land or their property over protecting the environment that exists on their land. So one of the things I like about having regulations is that it clearly spells out what the regulations are, what's expected of us, so that we all know what's expected of us on our property. For fairness, I think it's important to consistent regulations across all the electoral areas on the Sunshine Coast. So I'm pleased to see the two amendments that would make the rules in Area A consistent with what we have already in our other areas of the SCRD. I think it's our duty as citizens and as governments to protect species and wild spaces for the future generations. So I hope that you will pass all four amendments, and I would like to extend my thanks to the SCRD staff and directors for their work on this, because this is something I feel personally inspired by, and I'm really pleased to see that it's being considered seriously. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine McEckern.
Thank you. This time, it's really me. I'm from Area A, and I live on Ruby Lake, and I am opposed, I remain opposed to the zoning bylaw changes under consideration. There are benefits and challenges associated with implementing green bylaws and conservation programs, and one must emphasize the need for balancing ecological protection with practical considerations for property owners and taxpayers. That is a quote from the Green Bylaws Toolkit. This toolkit has been referenced in the staff report, or from the SCRD, as a source of the provincial guidance, although it is actually a resource book published by a non-government organization, the Stewardship Centre of B.C. In the process leading up to this public hearing, the SCRD has failed to recognize the need for this balance. It is not even mentioned as a consideration. The benefits of public education and voluntary compliance is reiterated over and over again in the Green Bylaws Toolkit. I believe the greater problem here is a lack of public awareness and a lack of overall enforcement. On the Sunshine Coast, most landowners are not aware of the laws of riparian protection regulation, the fact that they cannot cut trees, build paths, or stairs down to the water on their own property. water on their own property. They don't believe this when I tell them, and they point to the stuff Joe down the shore has done to his property. The infractions are innumerable, and that, I think, is the bigger problem here. And the riparian provisions have been around for almost 20 years. Only recently has the SCRD provided a little picture and information on their website about riparian requirements, I think about five or six months ago. It's a step in the right direction. But given this context, the staff report and description of the bylaw amendments does not adequately disclose what is happening here. The very title, Riparian and Shoreline Amendments, does not alert the public to setback increases, drastic reduction in subdivision potential, nor the limits on the use and alteration of privately owned land coming their way. The use of the term "housekeeping" in this situation is particularly misleading. As for the rationale, I also question the inference in the public information that the word "housekeeping" is used because the changes are required by the province. This is simply not the case for the buffer and hardscaping provisions, or the occasional water exclusions from subdivisible land. It is questionable as to the rationale for creating a SPIA exclusion for both minimum parcel area and usable parcel area. I'll discuss that a little bit later. So what are the real concerns here? Are the ocean setbacks being increased because of flood concerns or erosion? That's the legislation that's referenced. In Area A, there are existing regulations that deal with these threats. The development permit areas for flooding and erosion in our OCP have stringent development permit requirements, which require reports from professionals before any development takes place. Before a solution can be found, we need to know what the problem is, hopefully to have science or some metrics to back that up. Given the erosion of property rights, it is difficult to accept general phrases like "climate resiliency," "facilitating environmental protection," "reconciliation," and "increasing green infrastructure." Okay, I'm on the list again to continue.
Great. Thanks very much. The next speaker is Ron Fife. He's in the boardroom.
Ron Fife from Roberts Creek. Couple of things that I guess have already been addressed, so I won't repeat them, but a couple of my concerns are, your website talks about people being able to send in their remarks, pro or con, and looking at that website today, there's very few there. So I'm just concerned that you're not getting them, or maybe my computer is not working. But I would like you to check to make sure you're receiving all the letters that have been sent in, pro or con.
I'd just like a quick question of clarification to staff. Is there any estimated number of correspondence that's come in?
There's so many blank pages on your website, but there's nothing there. You want to stop my time, please?
Thank you for the question, Chair. Senior Planner Clark is just going to get the binder. There is a binder which should be on the website, which has over 300 responses that we've received written. Those form part of the public hearing record, as do the comments from tonight, and will be part of the board's consideration of the proposed bylaws. So apologies if there has been some sort of technological glitch that we're just becoming aware of. We are actively working to keep it updated as of noon today for the cutoff, and with respect, that some redaction has to be done for personal information as part of getting them posted.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My other second point would be to talk about the provincial regulations which you referred to about this, the passing of this new bylaw. And I would like to read something to you from, and perhaps I'm the only guy in the room who's confused, but there's been no discussion about grandfather clauses. So this is what the provincial government says. To what types of development does the RAR not apply? The RAR only applies to activities that are residential, commercial, or industrial activities and/or ancillary activities related to, related or approved by local government or Part 14 of the Local Government Act. The RAR does not apply to the following. A development permit or development variance permit issued only for the purpose of enabling reconstruction or repair of a permanent structure described in Section 532.1 of the Local Government Act if the structure remains on its existing foundation. Existing permanent structures, roads, and other developments within SPIAs are grandparented for their existing use. For example, a concrete patio with a SPIA may be repaired but not be replaced with a different permanent structure, example, a building addition. Landowners can continue to use their property as they always have if a SPIA is designated on it. The RAR also has no effect on any repair, renovation, or reconstruction of a permanent structure on its existing foundation. Only if the existing foundation is moved or extended to a streamside protection and enhancement area SPIA would the RAR apply. So if the, okay, anyway, that needs to be considered.
That's good information, and you can come back and follow up.
I'll just finish with saying that grandfather clause needs to be seriously considered for existing properties and homeowners, no problem with new developments.
Next up is Donna Sugar.
Donna Sugar, Area D. That's a very high microphone. Does it bend? I guess it does. Yeah, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about, so I'm going to have to put my name on the list again, because I won't get through it. I really appreciate the eloquence with which some people have spoken about protection of sensitive ecosystems. I wholeheartedly agree. However, I think these bylaw amendments need work. So I want to talk first about proposed amendment number one, the parcel area calculation. The staff report that I saw on the website from 2023, summer of 2023, says, quote, "Both zoning bylaw 337 and 722 currently allow for streamside protection and enhancement areas to be considered developable area at time of subdivision. The SCRD planning staff have received direct guidance from provincial riparian biologists that zoning amendments to rectify this policy conflict are required." But that is not actually the wording in the bylaws. It does not say that the riparian area and SPIA are to be considered developable. In fact, the opposite is true. In relation to subdivision potential, zoning bylaw 722 refers to both a minimum parcel area, which is to exclude such things as roads, community sewers, and parkland, but does not include riparian area and SPIA, and a continuous developable area, which requires that certain minimums be achieved when the riparian area and SPIA, as well as other concerns, are netted out. In other words, bylaw 722 already meets the provincial standard, as stated in the above segment in the staff report. The riparian area and SPIA are already removed from the calculation of continuous developable area for the purpose of subdivision, and they do not need to be removed from the minimum parcel area calculation. Zoning bylaw 337 has some more complicated and, I would say, inconsistent language, but the intent is the same, and the language in the two bylaws could quite easily be brought into alignment without netting the riparian area and SPIA out of the minimum parcel size calculation, because it's already there in the continuous developable area criterion. In my written submission, which is in your package, I mentioned that the wording in the BC Land Act refers to both developable area and footprint, and I was mistaken in saying that the term footprint is not defined. In fact, it does appear in the definition section of the Act in a number of different ways, all related to areas of human disturbance, not subdivision. It appears that planning staff are equating developable area and footprint with minimum parcel size. Nowhere in the definitions could I find that relationship, so I don't think that leap of logic is appropriate. It could, in fact, unnecessarily reduce a property owner's ability to create new lots, and we all know we need new housing opportunities. I'm not talking about runaway development. Density is controlled in our bylaws, and I'm not suggesting changes. But instead, I have two proposals. The definition of continuous, oh, I'm sorry, I'll have to give my proposals next time.
I'm trying to find an elegant way of inserting the three minutes, but you can come back. Thank you. Our next speaker is Landon Dix, who is on Zoom.
Hello, Landon Dix, Area B. Thank you to everybody there tonight. Yeah, I just want to bring forward the consideration about the SCRD's planning department's ability to handle potential variance permits going forward. Already, I know that the planning department is very far stretched staffing-wise, and every property is unique, and creating blanket rules that need to be considered in a more independent way, property-to-property basis, will surely increase staffing requirements at the planning department. I know the planning department is working actively on trying to streamline things, including bringing in, like when they brought in the pre-application process for development permits. But as we know, there's a lot of time taken off in the summer, and BOV meetings are infrequent. Yeah, I just want the SCRD to consider, before approving any bylaw changes, that they are capable of handling any changes in their scope of work. I do understand and support protection for the SPIA. I look at developments that come in before they even reach the SCRD in their requirements for applications and are able to go and log pretty much their entire properties, and they can surely cut into the riparian areas and SPIA without even having it on the radar of the SCRD. So to create safe restrictions and environmental protection around that, that can be notified through bylaw enforcement, I do like the idea of that. But that being said, you look at a 30-acre development that just wants to maximize the land versus a very narrow property that has been restricted by SPIA setbacks plus a buffer zone, it may become almost inbuildable to create a home there. So that's an example where someone would likely go to the Board of Variance. I'm in support at this time of having the SCRD come in line with provincial regulations, but not so much imposing, getting in line with guidelines, because I just personally don't think that we have the staffing to support the ripple effect of that. Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you, Landon. Our next speaker is Beverly Munch, and she's in the room.
What degree are they?
They're around a three.
Oh, that might be too much. Anyway, I'll try. I think I can blow it up. First of all, I wanted to say thank you, Julie. I appreciated the brief summary that you gave, because it helped me get some clarity. I would also, though, have to say, oh, Beverly Munch, A. Thank you. Okay, sorry. I have found it stressful and quite disheartening, but the process that's been taken, it seems to have been done without due consideration to somebody like me, who basically, my heart and soul is on the Sunshine Coast and has been for decades. And I've given an environmental sense to my kids, because we live on a lake, and they have to be very aware of everything that we do on the lake will affect the lake. So for me, kind of coming into this scenario where I have an old cabin that I need to bring up to code, and I need to bring it up to fire standards, and I need to bring it up to safety standards, and I start hearing that I can't build stairs, I can't do this, I can't replace this, I can't replace that, and my husband sent an email in months ago saying, could we get clarity on this? And the answer that came back was very unclear and created even more stress for me, and you can tell by my voice, I do get stressed by these things. So that's just a, I do feel that there hasn't been due consideration to the impact of people like me, who are property owners and value being there. Yes, I understand the property values will be impacted, but it's, for me, it's the ability to maintain my property and/or improve my property to adhere to these safety standards. And when I hear something like, oh, well, if your house burns down, you can't rebuild it, because, yes, I have an old timer that's like right in the riparian zone, and I go, okay, like that's generations that are going to be gone from memories, right? And I know that's personal, but it's also, I do think when my kids say to me, who are now very environmental, and they make decisions based on the environment, say to me, the people they became is because of their experience growing up on a lake where we live like a pioneer. We're water access. We have to schlep everything, the awareness of everything you do. So it's sort of, it's sort of the impact without considering these things, that I may not be able to continue taking my kids to their cabin, or my new grandchild, who's 15 months old. I do understand the need to modernize and come in alignment, but I get confused, because I've just heard that we are already in alignment, and I'm going, okay, where are we at with this? I do believe in protecting our environment, and I would like us as a generation to lead for the future rather than kind of running behind. But I do get panicked that this is not bringing logic and clarity, that these amendments, as I can already feel, have proposed, that as they are proposed, have created more problems, they've created more confusion. I think it was Landon Dix who just spoke about the onerous process right now to try and figure out what you can do in your development, and the staffing has been just a huge challenge for everybody. I'm sure all of you are overworked, and it just, I feel that what is currently inconsistent in trying to come up with a way to create that you don't have violations, this is almost like a shotgun as opposed to a rifle. Okay, I'll come back.
Thank you. Next up is John Erickson.
So first of all, thank you for having this meeting, and I look forward to the chance to speak to it. I'm going to, I may need a bit more time, so I've already written myself in.
Can I get where you're from first, John?
Pardon me?
Can I get where you're from, like what area?
I live in East Porpoise Bay, near the provincial park.
Thank you.
So I want to start first with kind of general things. Years ago, I started to hear that the Thames River in England, of all things, used to be horribly, horribly polluted. It had industrial use for centuries, and so fish and other wildlife were basically killed by industrial use. They started to slowly care for the streams. I know, I'm getting to the point. And it was amazing how quickly, instead of saying 50 years, 100 years, the fish came back. So going from that big picture to locally, I sat in at the Long House and heard, I think, Calvin Cragan, who was head wiser chief, speak about when he was a child. He was taken by his grandparents to hide him away from the schools, up the inlet, and the water was just teeming with salmon. You could almost walk on it. And his comment, the one I remember, was that he felt that the fisheries and oceans Canada had mismanaged the resource, mismanaged it. So that's, those are general, broad things. I was sitting on the beach in my little neighborhood about this spring or so, or sometime recently in the last six months, and fish were jumping down at a little stream that runs behind the mailbox by my house. I went down to look, and there were actually fish swimming right at my feet in this little tiny trickle of a creek running behind the mailboxes. That same little creek, it runs year-round. It's a beautiful thing. But about a year or a year and a half ago, we had that environmental river. When that tiny, little, well-behaved creek became a torrent and came across the road and flooded the houses and flooded the street, it was just chaos. chaos. So I started to look at maps of the area, and low and behold, where it was trying to go, and flooding the houses and the garages, that's where it used to go. In other words, two houses, or three houses, and their lots, were built on top of the original stream bed. I started to look at other maps of the immediate area where I live. You know Burnett Falls, that comes down, beautiful little park? Well, low and behold, it used to run in a different place, too. It no longer runs where it has, where it has been, or the stream bed is still there, actually. It's been moved. Somebody got hold of a backhoe and moved it about 300, 400 meters away. The same with my little street, where that stream, it was moved and put into culverts, put into a ditch, put into a trench. The trench was lined with jagged riprap. Okay, is that it? Okay, I will come back for part two.
Thank you, John. Next person speaking is Dave Bonser.
So, good evening. Thank you for having this public hearing. I appreciate the opportunity that we all have to give our input on these changes to the bylaws, or proposed changes, I should say. I live in Roberts Creek, and I've been there for over 30 years, and I have personally built the house that we live in, and I'm building houses for my kids on the same property, because we're allowed to do that. And what I've noticed, and I expect everybody in the room will agree, that we've seen quite an increase in the regulations that are mandated to achieve construction of residential structures. And of course, that is all, that just adds to the cost. And we wonder, well, why is there a housing crisis? Why are houses so expensive? And part of the answer is because of all the regulations that we face. So my concern about this bylaw is not about the bylaw per se, but it's about the implementation of the bylaw. So if I go onto the SCRD website, for instance, and I look at, this is very close to my property, I look at Robinson Creek, and the map of the riparian zone for Robinson Creek, Robinson Creek is actually outside the riparian zone. Now, my concern is that, as somebody who will want to build another house for one of my kids, I need to go through a process that says, well, you know, actually, I'm outside the SPIA, but the map says I'm inside the SPIA. So now, how do I prove that I am going to be conforming? Do I have to go and get an environmental assessment and the whole nine yards? I don't think that that's fair, and I, what I would really like, and my recommendation of, out of this process, is that any changes to the bylaws be put on hold until all of the mapping is actually done correctly, and that may involve ground truthing, but otherwise, there's too much uncertainty, and it certainly discourages people from doing building when they are unsure about, well, you know, do I have to get these environmental assessments? Or, you know, how do I, do I have to go and prove through a legal survey that, in fact, my property, or where I proposed to build, is outside, even though the map says that it is? So that's my two cents worth. Before you implement this bylaw, make sure that your mapping is correct, so that those of us who are attempting to increase the supply of housing don't face any more hurdles in terms of getting those residential structures built. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker is Susan One. She's on Zoom. Go ahead, Susan. We can't hear you. Okay, what, in the interest of time, what I'll do is come back to you, Susan, and hopefully we'll get that worked out. Thank you. So our next speaker is in the room. It's Cam Forrester. Welcome.
Hi there, folks. Cam Forrester from SeaShelt, and I'm a QEP, providing services throughout all the areas of the SCRD. I have a, I'm confused about something in the bylaws. And so if I'm confused, either I'm misreading something, and I'm just clued out on some points, or there's confusion in the bylaws that will, you know, end up being confusion down the road for homeowners and professionals and reviewers and the SCRD staff. So it relates to the freshwater and the 17-meters setback. So I read that as a blanket setback on all watercourses. And it seems like we are looking at these bylaw amendments in the lens of the RAPR. But the setback kind of references a 15-meter setback that's already sort of chipped in stone within the SCRD, and that, to me, as I understand it, is a flood protection setback. The RAPR is a habitat, and there's a flood protection setback, different bylaw, different places in the bylaw. So if you look at the RAPR setbacks for habitat, they could be 2 meters for a ditch, 5 meters for a ditch, or for a small trickle, any ephemeral kind of intermittent stream, 10 meters. So are we talking about an habitat setback, moving out to 17 meters as a blanket? Or are we talking about the structural setback to any watercourse, including anything that meets the definition of watercourse, which could be a spring, a stream that runs intermittently, seasonally, runs underground? The watercourse definition under the Water Sustainability Act is broad. It catches everything now. And does that mean that we're going to have a 15-meter setback, and is it a habitat or a structural setback? That's my confusion. I just, I can't make it out. It seems like we're talking about the RAPR, which is great, and that's an habitat issue, but are we talking about habitat when we talk about these setbacks? Okay? Yeah, and, you know, the RAPR does not apply to some watercourses. Clearly doesn't. There's, you know, guidance in the regs about that. There are rare cases, but if a stream is not connected to fish, or you have an isolated wetland, those are not covered off by the RAPR. They would be covered off by the structural setback, the flood protections setback in the bylaws, but would not be a habitat issue. Okay, so that's, I'm confused, and if I'm confused, then there may be confusion in the way things are worded, and may come up later.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a quick recess and speak to staff. Is, the question that was asked, is that something that can be readily clarified on the fly, or is that something you prefer to be answered on Let's Speak SCRD?
Well, thank you for the question, and certainly, part of the process of a public hearing is when we hear things that relate to clarity. There are things that we have an opportunity to clarify prior to the bylaws moving forward as future readings. The intent of the setback is both, has habitat and flood protection implications. I don't think I can get into the specific details here on the fly, but it would pertain to all watercourses, as it's written in the bylaw today, so I can confirm that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, staff. We'll maybe get some clarifying language, and we'll put it up on the Let's Talk SCRD under this project. But that was a good question. Thank you. Next speaker, we're going to try Susan One on Zoom again. Can you hear me, Susan? Can you hear me now? We'll try one more time after Carol, who's also on Zoom. So the next person up is Carol Reimer. Okay, well, we'll have to move on. I'm going to ask staff that they keep a list of the Zoom speakers that have not been able to reach us, because I do want to make sure they get the opportunity. Should we do the same with Diane? Is this a boardroom glitch?
Thank you, Chair. No, there's no glitch. We're just waiting for the speakers in the virtual gallery to be promoted and unmute themselves, and sometimes it takes five or six seconds.
Okay, I'll try again. Shall I try with Diane and see if she can hear us? Diane Sanford on Zoom. Can you hear me? And I'll give it a bit more time.
There we go. Okay, now, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, I can hear you.
Okay, so I shall go ahead, then. I'm calling from Roberts Creek, where I've lived for a good number of years. And first thing I wanted to say is that I'm in agreement with the amendments to both zoning bylaws. It's about time that these bylaws were brought up to date and to provincial standards. But a couple of caveats to that. Care should be taken to ensure that the QEP, that's Qualified Environmental Professionals, that are hired up to date and have relevant recent experience in the area they're working. I think there's something that we all need to realize, and that is that those requirements are becoming universal and probably needed. And so these QEPs should be specialists in whether it's ocean shoreline, freshwater creek, marsh lakes, or other waterways. So I think that's something that's coming up, because we don't have enough of those people around right now. Let's see, what else can I tell you? Due to the vulnerability of offshore species in ocean shoreline settings, what is done above the high tide line has many direct impacts on shoreline life, as well as the offshore eelgrass beds or kelp. Shade trees, and there was mention of that by one of the other speakers, being removed at or above the high tide line will affect the shade on the beaches and have detrimental effects on shoreline spawners, such as sirs melp and sandlance, who rely on that shade to prevent their eggs from cooking in hot summer sun periods during their incubation in the sand. And don't forget, that shade also helps prevent baking all those people that like to be on the sand, too. So vegetation removal degrades the filtering effects of the backshore and increases sedimentation, especially during extreme water events. So those increases in turbidity in streams getting to freshwater caused by impacts on vegetation within and above the riparian zone carries excessive sediments down to the ocean and impacts shore life, whether it's on the creek's shorebank on the shorelines, or adjacent eelgrass beds that live where the estuary is, and they cannot tolerate excessive sediments. And there is changes. We're losing about 7% of our eelgrass worldwide every year. And so what we can try to do is small steps such as this to mitigate some of those long-term effects that start headwaters of our waterways down to the ocean. And the last thing, I guess, I was going to say is that eelgrass beds are protected under the Fisheries Act, and are important nurseries, funding, feeding areas, shelter, and migration corridors for many species, including outmigrating salamander species, such as chum, coho, chinook, cutthroat, and steelhead. I guess, in finishing, I'm going to say that change is needed in the way we perceive special areas where bylaws meet. They are not assets to be enjoyed privately, but areas to be protected for the commons. And I do think, getting back to a comment I heard earlier, that grandfathering, I assumed by reading these bylaws, that was part of it. And so anything we can do to clear up all the questions about what these changes are and how they're going to be implemented would be excellent.
Thank you very much, Diane. So Susan on Zoom, can we try you one more time? Can you hear me, Su? It's Diane still. Susan, can you unmute? Okay, we can't seem to get to Susan. I'm really sorry about that. So next, we're going to move to Carol Reimer. Oh, yeah, Carol Reimer, who's also on Zoom. Can you hear me, Carol?
I can.
Super. Go ahead, and where, what area are you from?
I'm in Area A on Sakonaw Lake, and we've been here now for 32 years, and have done nothing but try and do the best we can for the lake, and follow, we have followed every single rule applied to us by the SCRD for renovation that we did to our cabin. We've done everything that we were supposed to do, and now with this, I feel like if the cabin should burn down, would we be able to rebuild? What would we do? There may be exceptions. We may get a variance. But if we were unable to build on the foundation that we have, which is really just posts, then we would have to blast behind us to put our cabin where it would have to be. And I think the damage that we would do to the lake by doing that kind of activity, rather than just building on the posts, which will never, which will never be damaged in a fire, they're anchored into the granite that our cabin is on. I just, I just don't understand it. I, you know, we don't have a big place. We work so hard. And I would, I just, I can't, I can't really feel confident that if we went for a variance, that would be granted. I just, I don't think that it would be. We did apply for a variance when we were building, doing our renovation, and at one point, we were even called liars when we applied, and we aren't liars. We're honest. We followed every single rule. And so, you know, just to have more rules and be, you know, not being able to rebuild if it burned down, which is a very great likelihood these days, it's, I don't know, I just feel like a resident that's done everything that I can. And I know other people around me have done every, followed every single rule. I support rules. I support protecting the lake. But when, when we've done everything we've been told to do, I just get disappointed with more bylaws making it difficult for us to be here.
I think, have you finished, Carol?
I have. Yep.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay, the next person up is Ryan Matthews.
Oh, there. Can you hear me okay? Hear me okay?
Yes. Yes, I can. Thank you, Ryan. Sorry, I was busy.
I'm from Area F. I'm a third generation on the coast. I'm approaching, well, hitting 65 this week. I've been involved in a lot of logging and stuff over the years, and have been a stream keeper for for the last 10 years. We own waterfront, you know, involved in everything like this, fished on Sakonaw, Ruby, all those years ago, have seen a lot of this place go. Forestry, you know, it's one thing where you log it. Yeah, I agree. When they log it, we get downflows and messes. But 30 years later, 40 years later, yeah, Elf is trying to call what I was involved in logging mature forest now, or old growth. I think the biggest thing is subdivisions and development. We've really got to keep control, because my streamkeeping experience is the biggest impact is development that's, you know, that gets, that's not being done right. And 98% of the people on the lakes and the oceans are doing everything right and trying their best. It's like that 2% or 5% that are just, how do you enforce people to make sure that they look after what, you know, hey, if you're a waterfront owner on a lake or the ocean, you have a big responsibility to look after that and make sure that it's, you know, not impeding or impacting the life of everything. But I mean, with that said, people behind have got an impact. They've got to have responsibility, too. I like, you know, like Hopkins Landing, all the trees have been taken down three and four layers above. We've got water pouring out on the beach now, fresh water, that wasn't there. So it's not just the waterfront owners who have to take responsibility for impact on the riparian area and areas, you know, it's everybody, sort of thing. So I kind of, I'm in favor of, you know, stiffening up this stuff, but I think if you're going to stiffen it up, you've got to get some people on the ground, and you've got to get some fines out there, because I run into problems all the time walking creeks here. And, you know, especially in subdivisions, I've reported it. And the comment I've gotten back over the years is, we haven't got staff. And, you know, you can put in all the rules you want, but if you haven't got staff to back it up, you know, and chase down the ones who really are, the ones who are really seriously billy. I mean, people who got stairways to the beach so they can enjoy it, stairways to the lake so they can enjoy it, you know, that are surrounded by trees, you know, that shade the lake, shade the ocean, you know, that should be cool. But, you know, if somebody who's clear-cut right to the beach and then puts grass, the whole end to end, and then hardpaned it with a deck or something like that, so that there's no riparian area and area, yeah, that should be addressed. Okay, hopefully that's some information from my end. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. So I'm going to make a call for any further first-time speakers. Do we have somebody who hasn't spoken yet, who'd like to come up and speak? Have we seen anybody online? Nope. So I'm not seeing any hands. If it's okay with the audience, I would just like a five-minute walk-around break before we start round two. So we've got the names up there, and we'll be back in five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back to the hearing for for the Sunshine Coast Regional District zoning amendment bylaw number 722.9 and 337.123. Before we get started on our second, our call for second speakers, I'm just going to ask staff for very briefly, there seems to be a consistent question that comes up about legal nonconforming within the act. It's come up several times and it seems to be a point of misunderstanding potentially. And I'm just wondering if staff would be available for a very brief wide overview of how that fits within this.
Thank you Chair. I'll do my best to provide a brief overview of a complicated section of the Local Government Act. So there is a section of the Local Government Act, I'll point people to it, it's Section 529. It is titled "Nonconforming Structures: Restrictions on Maintenance, Extensions, and Alterations." So that is the section of the Local Government Act that would apply to a structure that is legally nonconforming in terms of its setback, which would be generally the place that we would use the act in instances that might be created through these bylaws, should they be considered and adopted. So that would be the section of the act that we would use. It is also further governed by case law as well, so it can become a bit case-specific. And so it's something that planning staff and building permit staff here, the regional district, would work through people if that was their situation, or even without these bylaws, if that is their current situation. There is some further information on our Let's Talk page as well regarding this, so I'd point people to that for questions. And certainly staffer are happy to continue to answer those questions for folks as they come up on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So we're now on to our second round of further submissions. And our first speaker is Gerald Seeburn.
Yeah, Gerald Seeburn, Area A. Oddly, that's what I was going to raise is the concern when a property becomes legally nonconforming, and a lot of properties could be impacted by these new bylaw changes, then what happens when a building burns down or severely damaged and you try to replace it? How do you, how do, what happens? And some people think, oh, well, if the foundation's sitting there, you're going to be allowed. They're nice guys. They'll let you do it. But what I'm reading from the Local Government Act, and apparently this section is still germane, and it says, "If a building or other structure, the use of which does not conform to the provisions of a land regulation by law, is damaged or destroyed to the extent of 75% or more of its value above its foundations, as determined by the building inspector, the structure must not be repaired or reconstructed except for a conforming use in accordance with the bylaw." So therefore, properties that are made legally nonconforming are at risk unless you do something in the bylaw to say that you're, and I don't even know that you could, because this is a provincial statute. So it's a very serious business, is what I said earlier, going private property and people could maybe not build their, rebuild their house, as Carol was rhyming, was saying. 25% not there, you move. Oh, there's a cliff behind you. Tough.
Okay, our next speaker is Larry Van Hatten. Thanks, Larry.
Hi, I'm Larry Van Hatten, Area A. I'm here representing the Sakinaw Lake Community Association. So the Sakinaw Lake Community Association has approximately 400 members, and they are strongly opposed and vote no to the proposed bylaw amendments. As property owners on the Sunshine Coast and with many years invested in stewardship of our lake, we feel we should be able to trust the SCRD to represent our rights while acknowledging those rights and legacy, yet we are unrepresented in these proposed changes. We were provided little time to digest the new bylaw changes, and with the proposed doc management plan legislation, feel overwhelmed by the many documents and proposals received. The community of landowners needs to have a stake in these discussions, as it will change how the residents of Sakinaw Lake are able to use their properties. As opposed to what some people think, the riparian zone is important to all of us, but consultation is a necessary step. We believe landowners have a right to the enjoyment of their properties while respecting the environment. We are a community lake and keep a watchful eye on what occurs around us. We cherish the water and the wildlife. We are and always have been stewards of the lake. We believe unintended consequences have not been considered and surely have not been discussed with landowners. How can a change like this to the bylaws be considered housekeeping? The SCRD needs to hear our voices and take time to consult with the community on such major decisions. Our members take pride in their efforts to safeguard the ecology and critical habitat of freshwater lakes. Attempting to address SCRD concerns with these overreaching changes has not been justified by the information provided. We are concerned that provincial recommendations are being casually applied to our lakes without much site-specific thought, but with huge negative consequences. Sincerely, the Sakinaw Lake Community Association.
Thank you very much, Larry. Our next second round speaker is Andrea. She is on Zoom. Go ahead, Andrea, if you can hear me.
Hi, I'm Andrea from Area A, and I just had a quick question. I'm curious to know how many people are on the Zoom call?
We're just counting very quickly.
Thank you Chair. There appears to be 51 in the virtual gallery.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Andrea. Our next speaker is John Erickson. And John, if you could speak to the bylaws, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so my concern is essentially that the small streams that run through our neighborhoods and through my immediate neighborhood have been violated. The, there have been laws in place for generations on setbacks. So when you see in my particular street, a stream diverted and put into a ditch and through two culverts and then in a trench and then filled with riprap, salmon can't spawn in a tiny trench about as wide as this filled with riprap. Now, the stream coming down from the Burnett Falls, as I said before, it's been diverted by about 300, 400, 500 meters into a trench, basically. Somebody had a backhoe and they decided to run it where they decided to put it on their private property. Now, if you actually look on your phone, on your cellphone maps, you will see where those streams run and where they used to let out into the sea. You can walk along the shore and see exactly where it was. Yes, go on.
I would like you to speak to how the bylaws, the proposed bylaws are affecting you.
Okay, my point is that I support these because when you see a stream put into a trench, it is, and it's running straight as an arrow, there's been a violation. That particular stream coming down from Burnett Falls winds and twists through the forest. You can still see that stream bed there. And if it's not in the shady trees, those salmon, the alveon, the young spawned salmon, are not going to live. They will be in direct sunlight. Further down the road, there's another stream that's been built on. You look at your maps, there it is, running straight as an arrow, and it has, a violation has happened. On that, on the stream coming down from the waterfall, you can see over the edge of the bank gravel that's been pushed down, sand and gravel. Over the bank, there is a cement and mine sand gravel operation there. If you look on that shore, on the edge of the bank, there is a huge, large cake of cement on the, on the bank of that stream, as big as this room. So I saw that maybe 10 years ago. It's still there. It hasn't been moved. So these are violations that, of existing laws, not changed bylaws. And further down where the stream lets into the ocean, that is federal land, right? The ocean, the shore is federal land. It's been carved into and private marinas have been made by somebody with backhoe. So these are things that need to be done. And so I, basically, I'm here to point out violations and say, we've got to enforce the laws, existing laws, not necessarily change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Our next speaker is, second time around, is Suzanne Senger, and she's in the room.
Hey folks, I thought I might speak for myself, but I'm going to keep speaking for the SCCA. I, one of the things that I'm finding in this conversation is I'm hearing a lot of fear and concern over increased regulations and what's going to happen to me if. I was sitting in the, in the audience just now and I Googled, you know, how many house fires are there a year in Canada? Under 16,000 structural house fires a year in Canada, where you wouldn't be, you know, an existing structure, right? Like, I mean, we're talking about a really small margin, and this is somebody who's house burned down on the waterfront, right? Like, this is mountains out of molehills to, to try and fan flames of, I'm sorry, but it's really happening, right? There's this really loud group of folks going, this is a terrible thing. Say no to any regulation on your private property. So, the Sunshine Coast, along with the entire planet, is undergoing a biodiversity crisis. As climate impacts increase and biodiversity decreases, ecosystems become more vulnerable to ecological disturbance and less able to recover from impacts. Daily calls for action from governments, NGOs, and communities across the globe flood the airwaves with urgent calls to address these problems. Through these bylaw updates, the SCRD is answering the call. Pre-contact, the ecosystems of the Sunshine Coast supported uncounted generations of wealthy First Nations societies, yet newcomers and younger generations have little or no experience of this abundance because forests, fish, and other food sources have drastically diminished from historical levels as a result of poor land use practices, including indiscriminate development in ecologically sensitive areas. Improving land use management to maintain and restore natural abundance is a shared responsibility by all levels of society, not just local government, provincial government, and First Nations, but also private property owners. The SCRD has engaged the community about this proposal in many ways. We feel it is listening and understanding the concerns of the community as a whole, while accounting for private property and development interests. We note that the job of directors is not to protect private property values for some. It is to ensure the SCRD has policies and processes in place to manage the public trust in a way that ensures all people, all values, all generations are considered to the best of their ability within their jurisdiction. This update helps clarify and streamline rural planning and development processes to support a range of needs. This bylaw update will impact opportunities for new development in sensitive areas, and we support that shift. We think the best way to address individual site-specific property issues is through engagement between property owners and SCRD staff, not through a bylaw update. We believe that questions of impacts on large lot subdivision potential is a conversation best held through community-wide official community planning and conversations about where and how densification is most appropriate in rural areas.
Thank you, Suzanne. Next speaker, also from the room, is Donna Sugar.
Thank you. Donna Sugar, Area D. I said that I was going to make some suggestions relative to the subdivision restriction, and so I'm going to do that. I'm going to suggest that the definition of continuous developable area include a definition of footprint, so that the alignment with provincial legislation is made more clear. This definition should refer not only to structures, but also to any form of human disturbance, including driveways and gardens, for example. I also feel that the restriction on small lots makes sense. The example in the map that was shown at the very beginning makes sense. But on larger lots, where the developable area can be huge, restricting subdivision does not make sense. And so I would suggest that the proposal to net out the riparian area and relevant setbacks from the calculation of total parcel area for the purpose of subdivision not be applied where lots of 2 acres or .809 hectares or greater are being created. I, you know, Suzanne just mentioned that zoning comes through OCPs. OCPs and zoning bylaws must be aligned. So you can't have one thing in a zoning bylaw and something different in an OCP. I also have a little bit of a story about when I was the Area D director and brought in the 15-meter setback idea for Roberts Creek, there was huge opposition as there is tonight. And in response to that, we created a citizens committee to look at the science and to examine the issues and come up with some recommendations coming from the citizens. We looked for people with a skill set. So we had a geographer, we had a builder, we had a developer, we had people who lived on the waterfront, people who lived inland but loved the waterfront. And they had conversations over several months. They looked at the science, they made field trips, and they came up with some recommendations which were implemented and are still in existence today. The 15-meter setback applied. People shifted their view because they became informed, and they felt consulted, and they felt heard. I'm not going to say that 100% of the committee was in agreement, but there were enough that it actually, the community settled down. The fire was put out. I recommend that you do that in Area A. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beverly Much, also in the room.
Beverly Much, A. I actually had to come back because I was given a job by my husband to ask a specific question. And so his question was, we have an existing nonconforming cabin on Sakinaw Lake. We are planning on doing an update and bring it up to the building code for safety. We will rebuild on the same footprint.
Can I, sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. This is a very specific planning question, and I'm sure the planners would be more than willing to speak to it. But if you could speak to the larger issue.
Okay, so in the bylaw, the proposed wording uses the word reconstruct as not being allowed within the new setback area. Okay? Will this use of the word reconstruct in the new proposal now limit our ability, which was previously told by the SCRD staff that this would be allowable? So there, that sort of ties to the confusion and the clarity. So that gets me back to the point about, as a longtime coaster, I really think we need to pause this process until you can kind of address concerns for clarity. Because he sent that question in, and what we got back wasn't clarity. So it is, and then he sent it through the normal channel. So it's sort of like, if you're going to come forward and do this kind of thing, we do need clarity on how it impacts people and have the ability to answer those questions, which currently we're not getting answers on. And so it does create that confusion. Okay? So that was sort of, until it gets, until we get the kind of clarity, I find it hard to support. Okay.
I'm just going to briefly go to staff. And the question I'm asking staff is why this kind of clarity is so difficult to provide on the fly? Like, there's a difference between a general question and how it relates, the impact it relates to a specific property. Can you just speak to what the, the concerns are from a planner's point of view as the questions they need to ask?
Thank you Chair. When it comes to specific property questions, it becomes quite challenging to provide accurate information if we don't have all of the facts in front of us. So it is something where it would require a sit-down with a planner. It could take 15 minutes. Sometimes we see complications where it actually, it might be an hour-long meeting just to figure out all the uniquenesses of the properties. Certainly, one of the things that we're hearing tonight is that all properties, especially along waterfront areas, are unique and they have uniquenesses. And so that is why it takes that level of due diligence to specifically answer those questions and make sure that we're giving you accurate information. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our next speaker is Cam Forrester.
Hi there. Couple more questions. I think I'm coming late to the process, even though I probably should have been part of things all the way along. But I'm not clear how the current bylaws are actually out of date and out of step with the province. I mean, I probably should know that, but I'm just not clear on what. I think that would be helpful to specify somewhere in the background information. And if I missed it, I apologize. There was a comment about coming into alignment with best practices, but best practices aren't necessarily requirements. And then the other question I had, and I think I can probably answer this myself, is currently in the Pender Harbor OCP, there's provision for a one-time extension or addition renovation construction into the flood protection setback, I believe, as a one-time issue. Now, I've never implemented that or been a part of that. I've just had it kind of offered up, and I can see how it would be important as a part of negotiating, you know, a non-compliance situation and being able to protect some of what's happened inside of a variance area or setback area, sorry. So, yeah, just wondering if that's going to be extinguished through this process or not? Because it seemed like the OCP and the drafters of that document acknowledged that waterfront owners may need to do that sort of thing from time to time, just have a little bit of flexibility. So, two questions.
I'm not sure if we're in a position to specifically answer those right now, but they're, they've been recorded, and they will be part of the consideration for staff when they report back to the board, because those are good questions. Thank you. Our next speaker, second time around, is Brandon, who's on Zoom. Can you hear me, Brandon?
Yes, can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, excellent. I have four points. It won't take three minutes. First thing is, I agree with the earlier speaker, John Erickson, on one point, we need to enforce existing bylaws before passing nuance. Second point, the public needs to see evidence that this is a crisis needing immediate action. Number three, absence of full support, optional amendments should not be considered. And number four, only those in support of these amendments tonight seem to be okay with the ambiguous wording that has been utilized in crafting these amendments. That's all I got. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. And then another, number two speaker is George Smith, and he's in the room.
Hi. Actually, I'm number, it's just my first shot here. I was just, I'm slow to get off my seat, I guess. First of all, I'd like to speak in favor of the zoning amendment bylaws.
Can I, can I just?
Oh, I'm in Area E.
Area E. Thank you.
Pardon me. Yep. I would like to speak in favor of the zoning amendment bylaws. However, I've been sitting here listening to confusion. And I think before one moves forward, the confusion needs to be resolved. It needs to be resolved by the SCRD by making language more clear and, and addressing some of the concerns in the room. I was particularly impressed with Donna Sugar's suggestion. I think especially, I mean, if you're going to play the game of, of trying to create change with science as a base, you need to have real science with people who can understand it and who are open enough to, to, to look at the issues and, and move forward. So, but nonetheless, the concerns put forward by the Conservation Association, people representing here, here tonight, are, are very real. We are living in a time in which, whether it's just climate change or the horrible logging. logging practices of the Sunshine, I grew up in a logging family, so I know how bad it is. And in fact, we have way fewer fish, we have impacts on our riparian zones, on the inlets, and on the ocean that are just unacceptable. And I compliment the SCRD staff and board for trying to take this sucker on. It's, people have talked about courage before, well, it's true. And as Donna Sugar was saying, faced with another similar situation by actually involving people and involving science in a way that really counts, I think we can move forward. But it's, given what's happening around the world, there's tremendous resistance to actually dealing with, A, climate change, B, fragmentation of habitat, C, the diminution of viable species, et cetera, et cetera. We have our role that we can play, we can actually do it, and we've got to get away from concern about, let's say, boogeyman concerns that people are going to lose their current rights. We have to make it clear to people, make it clear to all of us, what the implications really are. And I, sitting here, there's too much room for people to be worried. And we all have our properties, we all have our love for nature, or else we probably wouldn't be living here. But we also have a history of really shitty development here and there, and we have worse logging and worse fishing. And I've worked in both those industries and been a construction guy. So we, I applaud you for taking this on, and good luck.
Thank you, George. We have another full, first-time speaker, Bill, on Zoom. Bill, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
That's fine, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thanks again for all your time, for all of you, I know what it's like in the public service. My name is Bill Seabright, I'm a resident of Sakinaw Lake, lived here for many, many years. I think it's fair to say that we are all in favor of protecting the environment. I don't think anyone that's spoken tonight would disagree with that. However, I think the devil, as they say, is in the details of any bylaw or act that we do. Area A is unique on the coast compared to the other areas. There are area, in Area A, there are numerous lakes, at least 12 around Pender Harbor alone that I'm aware of. And several of these lakes, like Sakinaw, Ruby Lake, et cetera, have been occupied with cabins, et cetera, for many, many years. There's actually a photo of Sakinaw Lake frozen over, if you can believe it. So it's been inhabited for a long time. The point is, Area A is different than all the other areas, I would suggest. I would ask if staff has actually studied the impact of these proposed changes on the lakes, such as Ruby, Sakinaw, and North Lake, for example, as other speakers have alluded to. These changes are not housekeeping to folks around the lake. You're suggesting or proposing to increase the, I'll call it the no-go zone, by 50%, that's very significant for a lot of people. Virtually all of the cabins, I would suggest, around Sakinaw Lake will become non-conforming as previous speakers have alluded to. I would ask if there's any science supporting these changes, particularly the buffer zone. I don't think that's in the provincial legislation, and that's, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I don't think, it's more of an administrative convenience than it is a science-based. The substantial increase, 50%, in the so-called, as I call it, the no-go zone, will increase the amount of staff time, I would suggest, and I understand part of the purpose of this is to decrease staff time, and I understand that as well, I've been in the business for a long time. But if you increase the conflict zone, surely, or the potential conflict zone, that's going to increase staff time, not decrease. It'll have the opposite effect. The video and the bylaw in general is focused on development, but the impact that we're talking about tonight, and focus on the lakes and that, is on existing properties. I would strongly, strongly recommend that you take up former Director Donna Sugar's suggestion for Area A specifically, and form a committee to study the impacts of this before you go ahead with the changes to bylaw 337.123. Proceed with 722.9 if there's support, but I think 337, Area A is quite different and needs to be reviewed as a separate bylaw. It shouldn't be grouped in with the other bylaw. The area is totally different than the rest of the Sunshine Coast. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any other speakers who'd like to speak a first or second time to the bylaw, the proposed bylaw? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak a third time? I have one speaker lined up, and I don't see any others right now. Sorry, did you say something, Bill? No? Okay, good. So anybody who'd like to speak a third time? Can you please put your name on the list, and I'll let Catherine McCracken come up and speak.
Just in case you see me as a mic hog, I was reading the statement of Harvey McKinnon one of those times. I broke off just before I was getting to discuss the secondary of specifics regarding the proposed changes, and that is the ocean setbacks in Area A. Again, I could not locate a provincial law requiring a 15-meter setback. To my mind, there's no urgency to this change, and moving houses back 7.5 meters will not create more green infrastructure. It will decrease views, increase land alteration to create safe access to the water, and will alter hundreds of properties to a legal non-conforming status. But I listened to what Donna Sugar had suggested, and I think that that view could shift depending on the experts I hear about it and the community members involved in that decision. I know in our OCP process, it was discussed, and I want to point out that the other areas have had at least a four- to six-year review period of amending their OCPs and then consultation and revision to bylaw 722. Area A did an OCP in 2018, and absolutely nothing has been done with that OCP. In fact, some of the changes here, I think, are in conflict with that OCP, which I think may be an issue. So I am all in favor of pausing that and for Area A looking at that setback change. The second area I want to speak to, oh, I wanted to add one other thing in relation to Cam Forrester's comment about the guidelines. In the OCP for Area A, they changed the setbacks at that time from 7.5 meters on the lakes to 30 meters. But they also put through a policy guideline that if you're expanding, I think, not more than 20% or not more than 300 square feet, you're going back from the water, and it was a one-time thing, it kind of sanctioned that, which made life a lot easier for planning staff as to the non-conforming use. So anyway, moving on to the subdivisible land, again, I echo Donna Sugar, I found the same anomaly regarding the, calculating the minimum parcel size. I was referred by planning to Section 10.4 of the Riparian Act Regulations. It speaks to a reduction in developable land, developable land. The equivalent term under the bylaw 337 is usable land, and it is already excluded in the definition of a usable parcel area. So as drafted right now, in my opinion, it's going to take the land out of minimum parcel size and also out of usable parcel size, and I do not think that's the intention. But let me tell you how this would work. So a property owner could not create a 5 hectare parcel, assuming that's the minimum lot size currently required. If a stream and spia covered, say, a half hectare of that parcel, it's disqualified because now it's too small. But if the usable parcel area meets the minimum, and there's plenty of space for a dwelling, a driveway, the septic field and all that, what is wrong with a stream running through that property? And I think it would be an extensive reduction in subdivisible land. So I think that has to be reconsidered.
Your three minutes is up.
Can I put my name down again?
You can put your name down one more time.
Apologies, sorry.
Aunt? Oh, sorry, I thought she could put it through again. What's her name? Catherine? I'm really sorry, I got the procedure wrong, you cannot speak a fourth time. A third time is the maximum.
You didn't say that.
I did not say that up getting, and it is my, my wrong. I'm going to ask Suzanne Singer to come up and speak a third and final time.
My first time personally. So Suzanne Singer, I live in West House Sound, Area F. I'm on acreage in the aquifer recharge area for Aqua for 560. I have standing water on my property, but I don't think it's a lake or, you know, wet land, but I do everything I can to protect it. I was interested to hear Catherine talk about the Area A OCP update and the interest in having this conversation and talking about the fact that the OCPs are the place to have this conversation, which I really agree with. I have to say, I don't believe that the confusion that we're hearing in this room tonight solely rests on the complexity of the issue or the SCRD's lack of clarity in communicating about it. I think there's an intentional campaign out there to spread misinformation and get people worked up to oppose regulatory improvements to protect the environment. And I hear the psh, 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 psh behind me, but that is my experience, not here just today in this room, in many other rooms, and many other times on the Sunshine Coast. So I just want to say, you know, if you got a million clickbait letters over the last couple of weeks, maybe look at where they're coming from, right? Maybe look at who lives here. Maybe consider that the downstream impacts of land use affect all of us. I think the science is clear, but this is a dog whistle, you know, allegation that the science isn't clear and it's not good enough and we don't know. Yeah, we do. Clearcutting, you know, removing vegetation in riparian areas affects them, and it affects, you know, long-term viability for those ecosystems to persist. So I just, I think, you know, we can't get caught up in heated, emotional, reactionary commentary. The regional district has a job to do, and as much as I appreciate what Donna said about bringing people together to have this conversation, if every single time, you know, property owners complain and say, "I didn't have enough notice, oh, you know, I need more information, it's unclear to me," especially when there's an active campaign going on to perpetuate that, you know, nothing would ever get done. And we actually see the results of that, right? The terrible land use impacts in our community are evident. It's time now. Thanks.
Thank you Suzanne. We have somebody in the room, Darren, who would like to speak for the first time. I was going to let Catherine speak again.
Thank you. Catherine McCracken, Area A, Ruby Lake. Another concern with the subdivitable land provisions is the exclusion of land sometimes covered by water, which is not supporting fish habitat. This could be vast areas in the sort of rocky, sloping rainforest of a lot of pooling runoff water in Area A. I mean, it could be potentially half of the landmass. And I see also huge administration or execution problems. Who is supposed to determine what area is so covered by water? It won't be a qualified environmental professional, because they, all of their technical manuals are based on a connection to fish habitat. So I suggest including that as an exclusion to subdivitable land is a far overreach and definitely beyond provincial requirements. Finally, the five-meter buffer and the hardscaping. My big concern with this provision is that increasing the spia area to cover a problem you're dealing with during construction is quite an extension. I'm sort of saying, well, why don't you just say that the building can't be located adjacent to the spia, because then you won't have the problem, or it has to be back five meters to allow the excavating material for construction? Or the problem could be posting a bond. I think there's other solutions to that. My really big worry is that in the second reading amendment, there was a default provision. So if you don't have a spia, so you're not involved in construction and development, they never set a spia for you, then this buffer is to be applied across the property parallel to the water, 30 meters, the maximum riparian assessment, the maximum area you look at. So there will be this five-meter strip of land, parallel to the water, where you cannot do the hardscaping, the pavers, the stairs, anything else. So in the case of my property, the house is set 30 meters back, it's built, it's been there for 20 years, and now I've got this no-build strip across my property, which in my property would mean the, an area of 20,000 square feet that is unbuildable, what, half a hectare. So I do not think that thing was quite, this is unintended consequences. So finally, in conclusion of my whole talk, I ask that the process be paused. I think we all value environmental stewardship, and I'm in favor of riparian protection, but not these overreaching changes. I have issues with the inadequate notice and consultation with the parties most affected by the changes. In the case of Area, this increased regulation and interference with property rights has not been justified, and neither is rushing it through on an emergency basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to call, is there any other speakers that would like to speak to the proposed bylaws? And this is a final call for any speakers who'd like to speak to this. Hearing or seeing of no more speakers, with no further representations, comments, or written submissions, I now declare the hearing closed for Sunshine Coast Regional District zoning amendment bylaw number 722.9 and 337.123. And I'd like to thank you all, everyone, for the attendance and participation, and also for the very respectful dialogue. I'm very impressed. Thank you, thank you.